Not hilarious, you're serious.
It was amazing that they saved all their balls down there. And then it's built and kind of the time of the event.
I was gonna say did you hear about the process?
Yes.
Get that right?
It's not all on the other side.
We're done.
Thank you. It was amazing that they saved all their balls down there. Um, and then it's built and kind of the time of the event. I'm talking to a little bit like this.
I was gonna say did you hear about the process?
Yes.
Get that right? We'll start with the work here. No, the workers will love that. I know, but it is. Now the last thing is construction. They decided to move the wall.
Okay. Did I just go up to the sixth floor? Yeah.
Are they redoing the wall stuff?
So that's gonna be, that's been funded. Um, they, they, to be fair, they didn't really have the funds for doing either. They're, um, they, they did explain some of the financing.
We ready?
Yes, is it about time?
Yep. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Carla, can you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Long. Commissioner Berman.
Here.
Commissioner Savage.
Here.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Here.
Chair Gelardi.
Here.
Item three, approval of the minutes. Um, I want to make a comment that we received a letter from Lori Alderman regarding the minutes. Um, staff is gonna look into the minutes and review them to see if any changes are needed. Are there any other changes we see for the minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh, excuse me. Roll call, I'm used to the old fashioned way.
Commissioner Long. Commissioner Berman.
Aye.
Commissioner Savage.
Yes.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Aye.
Chair Gelardi.
Yes, motion carries. Item four, are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, no changes this evening.
Alright. Item five, public comment. Uh, do we have any public comment that would like to comment on any non-agendized items? Seeing none, Carla, do we have any online comments?
Thank you Chair Gelardi, speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Lori, you have the floor.
That was not acceptable for the minutes to have such a vague statement. If you're accepting minutes, you need to have the exact wording that will be in the minutes, not how the interpretation will be. Those minutes should not have been approved. The other thing is, it is a personal insult to me that these minutes were written like this. I spent two years, two years of paralegal work against the city in federal court to, about the assumption that I spoke twice on the same agenda item. Whoever wrote these notes, wrote it to, as a personal insult to me, that I spoke twice. I did not speak twice on the agenda item. I spoke once on the agenda item, which was the Katati Village Development, and I spoke stating that Neil Hancock should not have spoke twice, which was a procedural matter. That is one public comment, one procedural comment. I would want, I demand that those, you revote on the minutes with specific wording. Thank you.
Thank you Lori. Any other comments?
Oh, sorry, no, there are no other comments.
Thank you. Item six, six A, nine, ninety twenty Water Road grade garage variance.
Thank you Chair Gelardi. Uh, item six A will be, uh, managed and presented by Eli Areola, uh, permit technician for the City of Katati.
Alright, good evening. Thank you Chair Gelardi, commission members and members of the public. Uh, my name is Eli Areola, I'm a planning technician with the city, and I was the staff assigned to this project. And tonight I'll be presenting the staff report for the variance application for ninety twenty Water Road. Next slide, please Carla. The proposed project is a variance to allow the construction of an approximately twelve hundred square foot garage to provide covered parking for the main residence at ninety twenty Water Road. Next slide, please Carla. The proposed garage is, has dimensions of forty feet by thirty feet with a peak height of sixteen feet and wall height of twelve feet, twelve feet. These drawings illustrate the size and style of the garage, but the applicant has expressed plans to utilize gray metal siding and white trim to match the exterior of the main residence. Next slide, please Carla. And for some background, ninety twenty Water Road is a one point five one acre parcel within the residential very low density zoning district, or RVL district. The parcel is currently developed with a main residence, an ADU, and a garage serving the ADU. There is no existing covered parking that serves the main residence. And so, the applicant submitted a building permit application for the garage on September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. During planning review of the building permit, staff identified that a variance would be necessary for the garage to be built at the proposed location. After working with the applicant to identify potential locations on the property that would comply with all setback requirements, it was determined that these alternate locations weren't feasible, and the applicant submitted a variance application to request a reduction of the front yard setback on January second, twenty twenty-four. Next slide Carla. Thank you. The project's site is the last parcel on Water Road within city limits, as highlighted in yellow. It is surrounded by other single-family residences within the RVL district to the north, and parcels within county jurisdiction to the south. Next slide, please Carla. The applicant is requesting greater than a ten percent reduction of the front yard setback, requiring garages to be set back at least ten feet from the street-facing facade of the main structure, and thus requires commission approval. The proposed project complies with all other RVL district development standards, including five-foot side and rear setbacks, five feet of separation between other structures, and is within the height limit of twenty-eight feet. Next slide, please Carla. To approve a variance, there are three findings required to be made by the commission. The first is that there are special circumstances applicable to the property, including the size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, that the strict application of the land use code deprives the property of privileges enjoyed by other property in the vicinity and within the same zoning district. Next slide, please Carla. The special circumstances applicable to the parcel in question include the shape and topography of the parcel. The highlighted area on the northeastern side of the parcel that staff identified would comply with all setback requirements wouldn't make sense for the garage because of the distance from the main residence. A fence also separates the main residence from the ADU, and siding the garage across the fence line and that far away from the main residence would pose accessibility and security issues. Next slide, please Carla. This highlighted location south of the main residence that complies with the front yard setback isn't a viable location for the garage because of the topography of this area of the parcel. The slope in this area is approximately fourteen and a half percent, which exceeds the ten percent threshold for hillside lots. There are increased setback requirements in these areas to promote development outside of hillside designated regions of parcels. And siding the garage within a designated hillside area would require a hillside development permit, which would also require planning commission approval and increased grading. Next slide, please Carla. The second finding is that the variance is consistent with the general plan designation of low-density residential, which allows for single-family detached homes, two dwellings per acre, and site coverage of up to forty percent. And I'd like to note that within the staff report on packet page eight under general plan consistency, and packet page sixteen under the third required finding, within the resolution, there's a typo that says, uh, the low-density residential designation allows for forty-five percent site coverage, and it's actually forty percent. And total site coverage, including the garage, including the proposed garage, would be eight point eight percent. Next slide, please Carla. The third finding is that approval of the variance includes sufficient conditions of approval as to not constitute a grant of special privileges. This approval includes a requirement of architectural similarity to the main residence and compliance with all policies, ordinances, and fees at the time of building permit review. Staff finds that these conditions are sufficient, given that all other development standards have been met, and the site has an existing row of conifers along the western property line that will provide screening of the proposed garage. Next slide, please Carla. The project is categorically exempt from environmental review under class three categorical exemption pursuant to sequel guidelines sections fifteen, three oh three, new construction or conversion of small structures. Further, the project is consistent with the final EIR, EIR for the Katati general plan. And pursuant to section fifteen, one sixty-eight of the sequel guidelines, no further environmental review is required. Next slide, please Carla. The community development department recommends that the planning commission approve a zoning variance allowing a reduction of the front yard setback to allow for the construction of an approximately twelve hundred square foot garage at the, at the proposed location at ninety twenty Water Road. That concludes my presentation, I don't know if Director House has anything else he'd like to add?
I think Eli covered all the points, and so I, we're available for questions.
Thank you Eli.
The applicant is also here, um, I don't know if he'd like to say a few words as well?
I think you've done a really good job.
Alright, well, we're all here for questions.
Questions? Questions? Carla, are there any online comments?
Uh, not at this time, Chair Gelardi.
Thank you.
What, what is there to set back? There won't be any actual setback from the front elevation of the house, but it has twenty-five to thirty feet setback on the road.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion, please?
I have motion to approve a zoning variance to allow an infringement on the front setback to the construction of a garage at ninety twenty Water Road, APM one four four, four two zero, zero zero one, in the residential very low density RVL zoning district. Mile number PA two four dash zero one.
A second.
And with that, we'll, um, include the typos that, uh, were mentioned. It has been moved and seconded, Carla, can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Berman.
Aye.
Commissioner Savage.
Aye.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Aye.
Chair Gelardi.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Party at Tony's Garage. Party at Tony's Garage.
Have my retirement party there with you. Thanks again, thank you.
You have a nice evening. Item B, planning, planning commission meeting management review and discussion.
Thank you Chair Gelardi, uh, yeah, item six B on the agenda this evening is a, um, discussion of the planning commission meeting, uh, sorry, kind of process and norms. And I do have a very, very brief PowerPoint just to help guide our conversation. And the goal would be to get direction on any changes that the planning commission which, wishes to make to the bylaws, and then also just discuss some of the meeting management, uh, expectations that are included in Rosenberg's rules. Um, so the council has historically, to give a little background, uh, the council has historically conducted pledge of allegiance at the start of each council meeting. Uh, but in October of this, of twenty twenty-three, the council considered, discussed, and ultimately voted to support adding a land inclusion, or inclusion of a land acknowledgement statement, uh, to their, uh, agenda at the beginning of council meetings. Uh, in January, staff received a request from a member of the planning commission to add this to our, uh, agenda process, and so, in response, draft, staff drafted, uh, some changes to the bylaws. Those are included as an attachment to the agenda this evening, and we can make changes that are deemed appropriate by a majority of the commission. Specifically, uh, the meeting process is governed by rule thirteen, which talks about the order of business of the planning commission meetings. And so, uh, on pa, packet page twenty-three of thirty-five, it shows rule thirteen, and there's, uh, some, basically just two elements added, uh, to the, uh, kind of process or procedure of the meeting, land acknowledgement and then pledge of allegiance, uh, those are just in response to, or, those are just staff, um, essentially mirroring what the council does, but we do not have to include, uh, pledge of allegiance if the commission doesn't want to, or the land acknowledgement if the commission doesn't want to, but, uh, staff is just starting at that point since we're essentially modeling the council meetings. Uh, and then, um, there's a little bit of a discussion of what a land acknowledgement is in the staff report, I'm happy to chat with that. Uh, and it does reference that we are on the land, historical land of the coastal Miwok. Uh, and that was vetted with the, um, Progressive Tribal Alliance with input on whether or not to include POMO in addition. Uh, and the input from them identified that traditionally, the coastal Miwok resided on the land that Katati sits on, although it was utilized by, uh, POMO members as well. But, so their direction or recommendation was that we just reference coastal Miwok tribal people in this land acknowledgement, but just so you know, there was some thought into that. And then the next slide, just briefly get into some of the specifics of, um, how the commission runs our meetings. So, um, commission meetings are followed under the Rob, Rosenberg's Rules of Order. Uh, many people are familiar with Roberts Rules of Order, Rosenbergs are just essentially a simplified version of Roberts, Roberts Rules of Order, if you were to see them are come in a book, and Rosenbergs come in a packet of information, so they're just a more streamlined simplified version. A lot's information, and I would definitely encourage folks to just take a brief review of that because it is helpful. And again, the whole point of these is just to, uh, allow for efficient meeting management and, uh, and directed and focused conversation on what the topic at hand is before the commission. Getting to some of those other points, uh, the chair typically runs the meeting, uh, or the vice chair in the chair's absence. Uh, so it's their responsibility, along with support from staff, to make sure that we're following the bylaws, that we're following Rosenberg's rules. Uh, and to your, your point about the vote earlier, I think, uh, it's your prerogative whether or not you call for a roll call vote. Uh, so you could have just asked for the simple vote, especially when something like the minutes, I think that's absolutely your prerogative as the chair. So just know that. Getting into a few kind of requests, uh, from staff. So, um, as the commission is aware, the city council has really prioritized supporting Zoom, uh, meeting attendance or participation. So in order to make sure all the attendees at home can fully participate, we really want to focus all public comment to be at the podium with a microphone, so that way everyone can hear. Um, as we work to upgrade the, the system and add more and more electronics, you know, there's just options for, uh, more and more interference to occur. So if you're not speaking, please turn off your microphone, uh, to do your best to minimize, you know, that, some of the kind of technical issues that we might be facing. And I'm sure staff will have more recommendations along the way as we continue to upgrade the equipment. It's also very important to focus on three minutes only, uh, for each agenda item. You, each, the, under the bylaws, each person wishing to speak on an item is allocated three minutes per item. Uh, but in order to make sure everyone is treated fairly and equally, we need to hold them to one, uh, comment per item and a maximum of three minutes. Uh, the chair does have the prerogative to shorten that, um, and it's typically to allow for more efficient, efficient meeting management. You could imagine if there's, you know, thirty people here to speak, three minutes each, that's ninety minutes just of speech, that doesn't include people coming and going, coming up to the podium. So we, these meetings can get long very quickly, we want to make sure that we are using people's time efficiently, that the meetings effectively run. Uh, so just know that is an option if we need to utilize that. Uh, and we can also request people, people fill out speaker cards to allow more efficient, um, management of the, the public speaker comment process. That allows the chair to acknowledge, um, who's up and then who's next, so that way people can queue, and the meeting speech process can be more effective and efficient. It's not required for people to fill out a card to speak, but again, just trying to manage our meetings as efficiently as possible. Another thing to point out is it's a best practice to ask people to make their comments, uh, and then, once, once they're done, to move on and get the next comments versus to engage in conversation from the podium. Um, it's very common for people to ask questions while they're there, and, and it's easy to fall into the, uh, practice of trying to answer those questions and get into a conversational tone. It's much better practice to allow folks to make their comments, even if they include a lot of questions. It's staff's job to keep track of all those questions, to take good notes, and then at the conclusion of the comment period, staff is gonna be ready to respond to all the questions that were asked. And that allows the effective and efficient comments to be made, and then the, it, it keeps the meeting management more straightforward. Um, if there's a lot of people having back and forth conversational type comments, the meetings can get out of hand relatively quickly. So I would just encourage, uh, the chair or the vice chair who's ever running the meeting to just look out for those types of things and try to keep them in the front of mind, um, as we're managing the meeting. Uh, that's all the, uh, comments staff has. There is, there is a recommendation that the commission review information provided by staff, uh, regarding these norms and procedures, and including incorporation of a land acknowledgement and the, the pledge of allegiance if we'd like, and providing a direction on changes to the, um, bylaws. And just briefly, I also want to highlight on page twenty-four of thirty-five, there is, there is an option in our bylaws currently that the chair can allow the public to come back up for a, for a second comment essentially. For clarif, it's essentially to allow clarification on things, or if the chair deems it necessary. We're also recommending that that be stricken, just getting back to, we want to treat everyone the same, we want to make sure no one feels that, uh, that's not occurring. And so, if we just say you get your three minutes and that's what you get, if you want to provide more input from that, do it in writing ahead of the meeting. Uh, and that's the way to provide longer comments. So that's what we're recommending from staff.
I have a, I have a question Noah. So, with regard to what, the Rosenberg Rule of Order, um, and putting the, the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, would I, I don't think it's a motion to amend or a substitute motion, would I just ask that, that both those be taken up separately?
Yeah, that's exactly right, so the motion would just be for the, um,
For the land acknowledgement.
Land acknowledgement first.
Right.
And then that way the conversation, this is a great question because it allows the intent of the rules. Then the conversation would just be about the land acknowledgement, that decision would be made, and then a separate motion could focus the conversation on the pledge.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, it's in the packet on page, there's two versions, this is a good question too, there's two versions. One is a broader land acknowledgement, um, on packet page nineteen. That's gonna live on the city's website and also be framed and hung in the chamber, I believe it's actually back there. And then the, the second land acknowledgement on packet page twenty is a more succinct version that's intended to be read at the beginning of every meeting. Uh, well, I personally am, am fine and comfortable, um, but, you know, I think because we have so many different staff members presenting, uh, we're all at different levels. Like I would just, I think this is, tonight was, uh, Eli's first presentation, and so he probably would be much, maybe have a different opinion than, than me about, uh, and so he probably would be much, maybe have a different opinion than, than me about a question in the middle of his presentation. But I would say each staff member is probably different. And, and some folks do get kind of into a flow or, or get, get kind of thrown off occasionally when their presentations are kind of broken up.
Yes, Chair Delardi. Laurie, you have the floor.
Can you hear me now? Yes, um, I don't know why you're changing the bylaws when you can't even follow the bylaws in, in this meeting regarding the minutes. Neen Hancock was able to speak five minutes at the last meeting. And he was not called, not called up a second time. He was called, he came up independently and took two, three minute slots. That's the difference. And if you can't, um, why change the bylaws when you can't even enforce them at all? I'm just disgusted at all of this. You guys, I've been trying and trying to get you guys to follow procedures for months now, and I get no action. And then you gloss over it like there's nothing wrong. Thank you.
Chair Delardi, that'll end Zoom public comment.
My name's Adrian Lobby. I'm not disgusted. I would just ask that if all of you would turn your microphones towards your mouth and use them, it will really help me to hear you. Thank you.
When we're up, oh, can I ask questions now? Okay. I, I wonder sometimes with land acknowledgements, and maybe not so much with the land acknowledgement, perhaps more with the, the Pledge of Allegiance, and that might be why you want to separate the two in discussion, of what is the difference between, you know, the actual city council, which would be an elected board, and, and us as an advisory board? And, and do we have the same kind of formalities of the Pledge of Allegiance every time? Or even of the, the land acknowledgement every time? And, and I don't really know what the answer would be, but I, I just ponder it and would, would love to hear all of your opinions as well.
I had the same question. That was my opinion.
I don't really have an opinion on it at the moment. I think I'm fine doing it, but that's the way the group wants to go.
I agree, we're, we're an appointed body, and so when I brought up the land acknowledgement, it was because we're sitting on this land. And, and, and I do want to acknowledge that. That feels important to me, to know that we were not the first people here. There were people here before we got here, and and those folks don't necessarily even have, have not even necessarily survived. So I think it's important to acknowledge that, and I don't, I don't think it's important to have the Pledge of Allegiance. That, that's my opinion. I, we're, we're an appointed body. It's, and, and so putting them together, it was, it was good to have the Rosenberg rules to look and see, well, how do I take this apart? And, and, but the land acknowledgement feels important to me, just to notice, to notice. And to know that, you know, I'm a blip, and my people have not been here very long. Not at all. So that's why, I mean, for me, that's why it's important to me.
Yeah, I kind of had the same questions also. We are a body under the council, we're appointed by the council, so we fall under their jurisdiction and their rules. And I have no issues with acknowledging the land, you know, we're, we're the original peoples of our land, but it seems like we're duplicating what's already been said. So my question is, can it just be like a, a statement at the beginning of our agenda, not necessarily having to be read out, but just acknowledging that, you know, we're following protocol that was set by the council?
Yeah, I've seen every version of, of all the, the permutations of this done at, at public meetings. I've seen commissions that do the Pledge of Allegiance, just like the council and the land acknowledgement. I've seen city councils that do not do the Pledge of Allegiance, or any, any public body, and certain organizations do the Pledge of Allegiance. And some of those have also added a land acknowledgement without the pledge. So I would absolutely say however the commission chooses to implement any of this direction is a hundred percent before the commission.
I, I was moved by, by what Shelley said. And, and I think, you know, as a planning commission, and our responsibility being what we do with the land in, in some ways, you know, I, I would want to acknowledge that. And so I'm, I'm convinced for reading a land acknowledgement.
I support that as well.
Yeah, I don't think I would support it if we broke them up separately, though, if we did one but not the other. I think for me, it would have to be both or neither.
Not against that, but very curious why.
If we're going to acknowledge the ancestral, you know, indigenous people of the land, then I would want to acknowledge the, the allegiance and support that we have for our country as well, especially as a, a body that advises an elected body.
So I need a motion. Are we going to take the, did you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to take them separately.
Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
Move to approve to put the land use acknowledgement, the, no, that's not what it's called, it, the land acknowledgement on our, our, at our meetings, when we have our meetings, in the spot where they are, in their new spot in the agenda, which would be C, land use acknowledgement, land acknowledgement.
Which version did you want to go with?
The, the shorter one.
Okay.
Can we add the, the note on page three of those to the first one, taking out the word "public"? And then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance separate. Okay. At the option of the chairperson, we'll strike "public" or "applicant", just have "applicant".
Do we have a motion? May I have a second, please?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Long. Commissioner Berman.
Aye.
Commissioner Savage.
Aye.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Aye.
Chair Delardi.
Aye. Motion carries. Can I have a second motion on this item regarding the flag? Pledge allegiance, I mean, I'm sorry.
I motion to add the Pledge of Allegiance to the bylaws.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Berman.
Nay.
Commissioner Savage.
Aye.
Vice Chair Moffett.
Nay.
Chair Delardi.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. Item seven, staff report.
Thank you, Chair Delardi. Just briefly, a few things that I wanted to point out tonight. An email was just sent out to the Planning Commission this evening of the city's sustainability newsletter. So our community development staff has really been working hard to put that together. This is actually the third edition of it, but I think a lot of people aren't aware of it. So I'm also just taking the time to highlight this effort that's been undertaken by our city staff. And it's a great, short, one-page email that just highlights all the city's sustainability efforts monthly. If you're interested in signing up, you can sign up and get them. But I took the liberty of forwarding this evening's onto you directly. But there's a lot of good information in it, including highlighting the, that the city's conducting a visual preference survey for Plex housing. So we would really appreciate people in the community taking that survey. It was one of the city council's directed goals for us to update some objective standards for what we're calling Plex housing, but it's essentially smaller multifamily developments. So like duplex, triplex, fourplex. And so we're trying to come up with some standards specific to essentially smaller apartment projects to distinguish them from larger, some of the projects like we saw last week or two weeks ago for you guys, the Kattati Village project. So please, I encourage you to take that survey, please forward it out to your friends and anyone who lives in the community. We'd love to hear from them. Mentioning Kattati Village, it was approved by the city council at last week's meeting, so that project has been approved. So long time coming, is the largest project that Kattati's ever approved. So really, a lot of effort and, and a testament to the city's commitment for trying to get more housing built in town. So I just want to highlight that. And then lastly, or I guess two more things. One, the active transportation plan is also out for a thirty-day public review and comment period. That was all emailed to you directly, but I just wanted to highlight that again for the community to know that that's out and, and available for comment. And we will be presenting that to the Planning Commission on March, on March eighteenth, so our next meeting, two weeks from today. And the goal there was for B, for the commission to be able to provide feedback to the consultants. They'll then go away, update the plan, and then come back, and it'll be brought through the decision process. So the formal process will begin after a review by the Planning Commission and the city council this month. So we're anticipating that being adopted by May, which is really great. And then lastly, it's been tradition for the city council and the Planning Commission to cancel one meeting in the wintertime during the winter holidays, and then one meeting during the summer kind of traditional holiday season. And staff is proposing to cancel the first meeting in July, that would be July first, and that falls during the Fourth of July week. So staff's planning on canceling that. So just a heads up to the commission and the public to make everyone aware that that meeting will be canceled. And with that, that concludes my department report.
One follow-up question. Any initial comments you're able to share from the active transportation meeting last Thursday at Kattati Station?
It's a great question. I'm sorry, I was not there, and I have not gotten the download yet today on. But I heard it went well. It was held at the Kattati Depot Building at the train station. We've been trying to activate that space and use it a little bit more. And I heard it was well attended, and some, it was seen as beneficial and helpful to the process by senior planner Harrys.
Thank you. Reports from the Planning Commission.
I had said one follow-up for clarification. On the comments that we received from Laurie, that's going to be reviewed by staff, and it's deemed that changes need be made. We'll be giving an addendum to those minutes. Is that correct?
That's exactly right. Because it's a procedural question on the minutes, staff wants to check in with the city clerk. They're the keeper of the city's records officially. And to make the determination as to whether or not the minutes need to be amended, or if they, it was appropriate to adopt them as, as staff, current staff feels that it was fine because they are action minutes. So we'll check in with city staff, and we'll bring back an amended set if we need to.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to thank Kimberlin for organizing our wastewater treatment plant tour. It was wet, but it was very educational, and I was, it was well worth our time. Thank you. Any information received after the agenda was posted?
Just the one comment on the meeting minutes, and we will review those and follow up as needed.
Thank you. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.